Today, we declare the March 10th meeting of the zoning board of appeals open for business. Attendants, Phil Sunde, welcome Phil.
Thank you.
This is your first meeting as a new member.
Thank you.
Pat Schwartz is not here, she's absent. Ed Burke is absent as well. Bob Hughes is here. And this is Phil's first meeting, this is Bob's last meeting, which is going to be a great loss. And Linda Donovan is here, Jill Moriello, our lawyer.
She's here.
Here as usual. We take a look at the agenda. The first thing that we're going to do is to review and approve the minutes from November 12th and December 9th.
Can we do that without that?
Kelly says yes.
Okay.
Says that Phil can vote. And incidentally, so that everyone here knows, in order for our motion to be approved, we have to have a unanimous vote, we need three of the five board members to vote to approve whatever is up for a vote.
Right.
Okay, let's see.
So we have to think. December, November.
Okay, December 9th and November 12th.
I read them online.
Let's take a look at the November 12th minutes first.
Okay.
I'm sure that we've all read them.
I have a question. Was there no meeting in September? Is the November 12th minutes talk about?
I have a...
All these two meetings were presented October 14th. What was presented?
I think we approved the September minutes in October. And there was changes or something that needed, that we kept putting off the August and October once more.
So there is a record about September?
Yes, yeah, they're already been approved.
September 9th, September 12th.
Okay.
No changes from you, Phil?
Nope.
Okay, I will then entertain a motion that we accept the November 12th minutes as written.
Some move.
Moved by Bob, seconded by Phil.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous, so those are taken care of. And we'll give our attention to the December 9th minutes. You have no modifications to this, Phil?
Fine.
You're fine with them too? I'll entertain a motion that we accept the December 9th minutes as written.
Some move.
Moved by Bob, seconded by Ed. All in favor?
Aye.
Phil, can I hear you vote?
Yeah, you said Ed, but it's Phil, my second.
Seconded by Bob.
Ed?
Oh, Bobby.
It's okay.
Sorry.
I can't fill those shoes.
Okay, that takes care of the minutes. We have a couple of public hearings that are open for this meeting, and the people who were the applicants for those variances had both requested, both cases, they requested that the public hearings remain open, but be continued until April anyhow, at least. So I will entertain a motion, just from the records, maybe safety, those applicants. I'll go one at a time. I'll entertain a motion that we continue the shallor super eight public hearing until April.
They want it until May.
I'm sorry?
They want it until May.
Until May?
They want it until May, okay, until May, yes, that's why...
Can we do it so much at a time, or should we?
Okay.
Yeah. We'll do it until May, we'll do it, okay? And so you have that second there, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that takes care of the shallor application. The second one, of course, was the CVS application, which is a major project, and they went back to the planning board, and I think they realized that there were some questions about their variances when they appeared, went back to the planning board evidently with revised plans. But until that gets approved, they want to continue the public hearing, keep the public hearing open. So entertain a motion that we continue the CVS public hearing.
Some move, until April 14th.
Until April 14th. Moved by Bob, seconded by Ed, in favor?
Phil.
Phil.
I'm sorry, Phil, I only asked...
It's okay, it's okay, I understand.
Okay. All right, now we'll move on to the application reviews. Kira, would you like to come sit up here and talk about your application?
Phil, maybe you have to put your sign facing over here to Linda. A little help.
Yeah. Please help. One thing I want to talk about before you summarize your application for us is you had requested that we waive the fee.
Yeah, I got a response, I don't know, from somebody in an email and said you couldn't do it.
Yes.
Yeah, got it.
Well, anyways, do you need more reason, or are you...
No, totally understood.
Okay, all right then, let's take a look at the application. Can you summarize, because, no, this is simply the first time that you have appeared before us. Summarize what you're seeking and how much of a variance you would need.
Sure, well, I just need to change the height of the fence. I'm not even sure what the actual limit is, but my fence that I need to be putting up is eight foot tall, high.
You want to put up an eight foot fence?
Yeah.
I thought you had requested nine.
No, I don't think, unless I roots lobby somewhere.
Okay.
It's eight foot steel mesh fencing to keep deer out of a produce farm.
Yes, and the farmer's on Springtown Road?
Correct.
How, it looks like it's going to be quite a large piece of property that's going to be fenced off.
I have 28 acres, 28 and a half.
How many?
The farm is 28 and a half acres.
And are you going to fence off the whole thing?
Yeah.
Excluding the house?
No, the house part is going to be fenced in as well, there's just one little, if you're looking at that map.
Yeah.
There's one little part there that we're actively farming right now, but we leased that from the property owner in front of us, so that would just be in a temporary fence. Do you see that on your little thing here?
Yeah.
This part here is temporarily fenced, but everything else would be a permanent fence. And so back here where my own property line starts again, we would start with the permanent fence and then continue on. But this would be closed just with a temporary...
And would that be removed when you're...
Correct, when we're no longer, yeah, when we're no longer allowed to lease it, then we would remove that, sure.
This is Springtown Road?
Correct.
And when you remove this one, the rest of the fence would suffice?
We would have to close the, well, we would have to come and close this in then.
This part here?
Yeah, or else the deer would just be able to walk right in.
Put the outside part of the...
Yeah, we would take that down, yeah.
Do you have any estimate of how much damage the deer have done?
A dollar estimate I don't have, but they're in there repeatedly. And we have a fence that's there now, it's a temporary one, but it's plastic two inch netting, and they have discovered if they bite it, they only need a small space to enter, about 12 inch hole will do it. So they can bite a little bit and make a hole and they come through, and we can go out and patch it, and the next night it'll be the same thing. So, and we've done that, I mean repeatedly. So it's kind of just, I've been saving up the money for it, this project's going to cost me about 30 grand, so I've been saving the money for a couple of years to be able to advance onto the steel fencing to keep them out. I mean, there's no shortage of deer, if you turn down Springtown Road, there's 40 to 50 on the Walkfield View land that's sitting there, and, you know, I've had 26 in a night in my fields, which is a lot.
Yeah.
And they definitely can't bite through the fence you're proposing?
No, they can't bite that, no, no, no.
Boy, I'm surprised that they can bite through, you know, the plastic.
And they're, once they find something they like, they're really persistent, so they just come back.
Did you, did I hear that this is an organic farm?
I do grow organically, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Kira, what crops do you grow?
Oh, it's a whole mix, I mean, it's all mixed vegetables, like, we don't do sweet corn at this point, but basically everything else is out there. We do market and a CSA, so we're in the city once a week, we go to two markets and then a CSA on the farm once a week.
So it's all crops, there's no animals?
There's no what?
Animals?
I have laying hens, but that's it.
And no fruit trees?
No.
Nothing we got?
No, we have like some strawberries, we plant watermelon, cantaloupe, but no fruit, you know, permanent crop trees.
Would you do me a favor, probably the best place to do it is on the map, you know, the red part where you say, this is outlining an adjoining area where we rent?
Yep.
And farm? Would you just stipulate, maybe just add right under that something about, when we no longer use this area, we will remove the fence?
Okay.
And simply, you know, and close off the part that belongs to it?
Where would you like me to put that info?
That's an interesting question, I would just make a footnote on that map perhaps.
Okay.
You know, you know what I mean?
Sure.
Just write down the bottom, it's probably the best thing to do, just print it.
I can do that on the copy I have, but you want me to then give you another copy?
No, yeah, I want you to give Kelly that copy after you do that, and she will give us another copy.
Got it.
Right, Kelly, thank you.
There may be other stuff that comes up that you might want to add on the map too, we won't know until we further the discussion, yeah.
What was that, Bob, it said?
There might be other stuff that might come up.
Yeah, yeah, but this is one thing that I...
The start of it.
Right, yeah.
So it's, you were talking about the variance, you don't know the height variance of the existing variances, there's a difference variance for the front and different variances for the side.
The height?
Yeah, so I'm just wondering in your application if you indicated that, don't we deal with four or six?
My height's going to just be eight the whole way.
Four in the front, six?
It's apparently eight foot high all around.
That's what she wants, but the variance she needs.
The variance would be...
So it can only be four feet in the front and six on the sides and rear, so she would be requesting four feet of relief in the front?
Right.
Two feet of relief on the sides and the rear?
And the rear.
Yeah. And Kira, you might want to make a note of that someplace too, because that's really, you know, rather than simply asking for eight feet, you're asking really for four and two.
For two and four, yeah.
Okay.
Which is not as extreme as saying I want an eight foot variance, you know.
Can I borrow your pen, please? Thank you.
If I may ask, from, this is the front, right, this is Springtown, so that's the four foot section, how far back does the four foot requirement go on the sides?
Goes to the front line of the house.
Yeah, where's, where the building is?
So it's going all the way back, it's going back a ways.
Yeah.
Let's go right through that.
Correct, this is a very long front yard.
Yeah.
Because of the setback of the house.
Right.
So you're not just talking road frontage counts as the front?
Not just road frontage, it would be across the front line of the house up to the front sideline. So where your temporary fence is located, now showing the dark circles?
Yeah.
And the notation 315 feet?
Yeah.
I believe, Kelly, that would be considered the front yard, and it would be back from there as well, 285 feet along those dark lots, plus however many feet it is to the front line of the front of the house.
Yeah, would you like that repeated?
And, I'm sorry, I'm assuming this is the house?
Yes.
Up in that corner?
Correct, my house, the greenhouses, that steps up there, yeah.
So it would essentially be the fence from the front line of the house forward?
Okay.
Toward the roadway.
And this is just so she's clear on where the four foot request goes to the, you know, six foot cross?
So am I going to have to try and write that out for you all, where I'm asking for the variance in height difference?
Well, we're working it out right now.
Okay.
From the road to the house, you're going to be needing a four foot variance.
Right, I understand that, I'm just trying to figure out if I have to write that down.
I want to ask you, does your house face the road?
My house, no, my house faces south.
Your house faces south?
Correct.
It's really well back, Ed and I were there, and it's very well back, it's very well back.
Joe, this part would not be considered the front, because of the laps in front of it?
It's kind of in irregularly shaped a lot.
Yeah, it's very irregular.
Yeah.
That's why it may be difficult for her, given the shape of this, to define exactly what's the front yard. So it might be better to just amend the application that it's for a variance from four feet to eight feet within the required front yard?
Sorry.
And a variance of two feet from six feet to eight feet in any required side or rear yard.
Right.
Make a note?
Right.
Yes.
Or just have, if we have a consent to amend the application that way, Kelly can then add on the record.
Do we have your consent for Kelly to amend the application?
Whatever the required front and side yard are...
Correct, yeah, that makes sense.
That's what you're looking for, the variance.
Exactly, yes.
And then the time comes, we can use that specific wording right in the record decision.
No, we'll put it right in the record, yeah.
And for the, to finalize something like this, do we need determination for ourselves in the record of what the front and side yards are, or is that general?
There's a definition of front yard and side yard and rear yard in the zoning law, so I would say if it covers it. And to be certain, what you're going to probably talk about in any final resolution is that it is going to be perimeter fencing?
Yeah.
Around the entire 28.5 acres on the applicant.
Right, because when I look at this, Joe...
And including the, and plus...
That's all front, that's right.
What's all that?
When this here, the house here, I look at this, this is all front yard, and then side is here, rear is here, and side is here, up to the house line.
Technically, I think that's correct.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I don't want to see a difference between any determination made by the zoning board of appeals and the definitions in the zoning law.
Yes, yeah.
So if we talk about front yards and side yards, rear yards as defined in zoning law, then I think you're safe. Because this board can't grant a variance from definitions. It can grant bulk variances for height and bulk, but it can't vary definitions, and the applicant doesn't want some controversy over that.
Yeah, we're trying to do this the right way.
I don't mean to put words in your mouth, but you don't.
No, I don't, I don't.
Can I ask a question, and specifically to Mr. Moriello? Is there, and I've reading, I've been reading a little bit on those distinctions, but there is no distinction between front yard, side yard, backyard, whether it's one acre or 100 acres?
Correct.
Okay.
This, those rules apply for this piece as well as a one acre piece in a one acre zone or a two acre piece for...
Right, okay, thank you.
So this is, this is effectively, oh no, it's 155 on the front, it's not a flag lot.
Oh.
This here is 155 feet of frontage?
I actually have a little bit more than that, but the fence would start to the south of my driveway. So I think that actually my total road frontage is 200 and something, I can't remember exactly. But this I did, you know, putting the points on the JIS map to get these measurements for you. So I know that the driveway is, you know, in from the lot line.
And you're not going to fence the driveway, so, yeah.
Not at that, not up along that whole part in the front there, when you get partway up the driveway where you hit that rented land is kind of where we would then jut it across.
Looks like you're going to have a gate there.
Yeah, right.
You show a gate on the driveway.
Correct, yeah. And at that point, like, if we were to, well, right now it'll connect with this temporary fence, but then if, you know, we're ever not leasing that, we have to put in the, close the rest, it would just go back onto my home property line the other way, if that makes sense. So across the driveway at that point, but up at the road frontage, there's no gate right on the road to enter the driveway, you go 600 feet up the driveway or 500 feet up the driveway before there's the gate.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is the gate there now?
Yep.
How high is the gate?
The gate is an eight foot gate.
So that's going to conform with the fence?
Yes.
Yeah, it's exactly the fencing that would be sold, it's the same.
So that would be included in the amending too, Kelly, that there is a gate down the driveway that would be conforming?
And if it's eight feet high, it's pretty much be the same as the fence, it would be the same variance.
And it, you know, the application, it shows on the diagram as a gate, yeah.
Joe, can I ask a question, please? I read somewhere about exceptions for keeping animals in, does that same exception apply to keeping animals out? I'm just curious, and it was somewhere in the code where, you know, especially for farm and agricultural areas, but anyway, keeping animals in, but I'm just wondering if it works both ways?
Well, that was one of my questions, the application indicates, but this is in an established ag district.
Right.
This property, yeah, and the county records show that. So whether, whether the agricultural use is the keeping of animals or the growing of crops or orchards or fruit or whatever, it all falls under the ag and market slots real estate, so it would all be under agricultural.
Okay.
So the issue here, I think, is really, for this applicant, not so much I'm looking to keep a particular animal out, it's really I'm looking to keep a particular animal out that is destroying my agricultural crops.
Trying to keep my crops being fed.
Right, right, no, no, I get it, I get it.
As opposed to I own a horse and I want to keep my horse.
Right, okay, yeah, okay, thank you.
Now, what I'm wondering too, are all of the structures indicated on your map already existing?
Yeah.
The back structure, the greenhouse?
Yep.
I'm just wondering how far that is from the rail trail, and how far the fence will be from the structure, and how far the fence will be from the rail trail?
Oh, the greenhouse up here?
Yeah.
Not this one?
I mean, I just have to guess that it's probably, from the rail trail, it is probably 60 feet, 70 feet, 60 feet, probably 60 feet. The greenhouse at this point.
Yeah.
So that would simply be lot size?
And there's a tree buffer there then too?
Yeah, there's a lot of scrubby undergrowth, some trees, I mean, nothing, there's no massive kind of trees, it's just kind of stuff.
And the building from, what about the building from the fence? Do we, are we concerned with fence setback for the fence, or not? You can go right up to the building, yes?
There is though, you can go really right up to the property line.
Okay. And the, there is one greenhouse too, bordering the property, 78 1-2-17 220, this one here.
There's two greenhouses back there, I see, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so I was first talking about the one that was going towards the rail trail.
Running the same direction as the rail.
Now looking at the one that's going on the next property.
Uh huh.
That's not our property, where it is.
Do you know what the setback is for that greenhouse?
I think they're 20 feet.
20 feet from the property line?
I believe, yes.
Did you put the greenhouses up, or...
I put them up.
Were you very careful to put them up according to code for the...
Well, I'm not sure that I know that there's code, so I have to say, I don't know the answer to that one, there, I didn't know there's a greenhouse code.
What's the...
Agricultural accessory buildings.
Okay.
Yeah.
There's no site land required.
No site land required.
No.
So what about putting up to somebody's property, that's, does she need a letter from that person, or?
No.
No?
Not, in my opinion, not on agricultural land within an established ag district.
Okay, okay.
Thing is, we want you to take care of anything that might be questionable, you know, so that you don't have somebody say, oh, I have to move your greenhouse.
Yeah, well, I mean, I think that, things, that I tried to figure out what the actual building setbacks are from sides of places before I put it, but I think I also read somewhere that greenhouses are considered temporary structures. I mean, it's, I bought this other greenhouse that's down the driveway, I bought it in Gardner, and it's a three, three bay greenhouse, and we took it all down and moved it and brought it and put it up, so they, I don't think they're, you know, permanent, they don't have foundation or anything.
Any other comments or questions at this point?
No, I'm clear.
Okay, I would ask then, with your permission, Kira, that you allow Kelly to modify the application as we've discussed.
Correct.
And I will entertain a motion that we open the public hearing for this application at our next meeting, which is April 14th.
Yeah.
Someone move?
Yes.
Phil moved, second?
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so that's actually the public hearing, so you might, it will be noticed in the paper, there will be signs up, you might want to talk to your neighbors if you haven't already talked to them, tell them what the situation is, and if you can get letters from them saying that they have no objection to this, that's always very useful, they don't have to appear.
Okay.
But if they would like to appear and talk and speak either for or against the application, encourage them to do that, you'll be meeting here on the 14th.
The 14th at 7 o'clock?
Yep.
Okay, so good.
Thank you, Kira.
Thank you, guys.
And you would take a look at what, how Kelly modifies the application to make sure that you approve of it.
Okay, so I can just stop back in to see you at your office at some point?
Yeah, why don't you, let's see, I have your...
It's Tuesday.
Okay, I don't know what day it is.
Can you come by Thursday, because I have to gather all this stuff together for the public hearing, because I have to get you the letters list from the assessors?
Okay.
So that you can review that, and so maybe if you come by Thursday?
Sure, no problem.
Good.
Okay, thanks, guys.
Thank you, Kira.
Okay, I'll see you. Okay, the next application is Salvatore Vecchio. Vecchio, if you would like to have a seat, is Vecchio? Vecchio, if you would like to have a seat, is Vecchio? Would you summarize what your application is about?
Well, basically, we need a shed for storage. There were sheds on the property before, when we, before we closed on the house. And we presumed that the sheds were gonna be there for storage. And we need to have a place to put a lawnmower and all the stuff that's not too far from the house, because we both have disabilities. And the problem is that there's only 31 feet, 8 inches from the property line to the edge of the house. And it's impossible to put a shed there, because there's a variance of 12 feet from the side of the house and 20 feet from the property line.
It's gonna be a very skinny shed.
No, we owe, we owe four inches.
Four inches?
Yep. Not enough, so that's essentially what we need, we need to get a shed for that reason.
And you say there was a shed, there was a shed when you closed on the house?
Before we closed, we thought the shed was gonna be there.
Is it still there?
No, they were taken away, and it was in February of 2014. And due to the town requirements and the modifications that people have done on the property, there was no COI suspect and things of that nature. And the town required to get rid of it or move it. There's no way they're gonna move it with the power of snow we had last February. And so they just removed it, so the we're closing the house. So it became a dilemma, that's an awkward situation.
So I know, I've been over there, and I just know when I was there that we just didn't have the appropriate measurements. So since then, you got the measurements?
Through the army, I have newly documented documentation that I created out of space, not the returning or engineering type person. It's just very clear faceted out from the front of the house. It's got all the dimensions there that I think I need, unless I can't add. Do have a copy of the survey with me, I'm gonna look at that.
And Bob, Linda, and Joe, just for your information, I did go out there last weekend, so I saw this as well.
Good.
Just so you know.
Do you have this staked out, so that even with the snow, it's recognizable?
No, you can't really see, as difficult as it is to get around.
The, the side, I'm assuming that's a side yard setback, is it supposed to be 20 feet?
20 feet, that's the side it requires, 20. I need the specification for the other side, because I can have room between the house. I want to put it in an aesthetically proper place where you could see the rest of the property and okay claustrophobia is looking through like a New York City street, you know.
When I look at this, is all of this your property?
Yes.
So theoretically, you could put it?
Theoretically, I can, but the distance would be too great and difficult to get in back and forth through sizzers of snow. And you want to avoid the obstruction of the property. You don't want to ruin the appearance of the property. If I put it in the middle, it'd weigh the whole center.
What's the issue that you can't walk 50 feet?
Well, she has 100% disability, and I have a 10% disability, and the ground is exactly perfect. And when I walk, the difference, it irritates my legs and my hip. And it's getting worse, it's not getting better.
And when they plowed the snow in the driveway, the snow was pushed up against that area. So if there was a shed there, we'd be able to get the snow out of the way with the snow blower right there.
You have to take out the snow blower more quickly, and the lawnmower as well. Now I'm doing it all by hand with a power mower.
Joe, was that where the prior shed was before it got?
It was, the two of them together, were a little setback, a little further from where I wanted. I want to get as close to the driveway as possible, because there's ash falling on the driveway, and it's solid ground to walk down.
And what about the fence here? Has that been repaired, remember that fence?
Has been repaired or replaced.
Or is it yours or the other guy's?
I think it's mine, it's right on the property line. I think it's mine.
Because you weren't sure, and I think that was one of the questions of, that you had two more feet or you didn't?
I may have some inches behind it. If it was done the way most people put their fences, they leave a little leeway for themselves, maybe a foot or something like that. I don't know how to put the fence there. And the survey is ambiguous as far as I'm concerned, I don't read these things.
Do you have?
Sure, I have a copy. I try to come prepared, but I don't think I'm in good shape.
Okay, those were the two metal sheds that were there before?
Yes, those are the ones that were there.
Do you want us to get copies maybe of this?
Yeah, I'd, yeah, you can have, you can make copies.
Is that what I have?
Yes, it's the same one.
Oh, yeah, oh, okay, that's what you have.
Oh, you have the?
It was in my application.
Yeah, I have that, it's not as clear, but I have that.
Yes, it's not, it's not too clear.
This one here shows the original sheds at all, but what I gave you.
Should I have your original?
I didn't get the original, I don't know why. My box is empty today.
On your pile right there?
No. That's the same here. No, all I have is, Kira's.
Yeah, it was the one he submitted originally.
Joe, if I, can I ask you a question, please?
Sure.
Two-part kind of, is there validity from the disability perspective and access that it is, there's a hardship involved if it's, you know, 50 feet away versus five feet away? And considering in the winter, that that's exacerbated because of the snow pile, that you really can't get to it at that point, but versus in that location you can. Is there, is there validity to that?
It's hard to say, because the physical disability goes to the particular person. The variance runs with the land. So if this house, if you were to sell your house six months from now and someone else moved in, that those somebody might not have a disability. I'm not saying that the zoning board appeals should ignore it, but I think it's another factor to consider along with the rest of the application. If it's a real life situation, you have to take it into account. One of the issues or one of the criteria, for instance, is, is there another, is there some alternative that the applicant can pursue that will accomplish the same goal? If there's a physical disability, that might come into play as the board looks at that particular issue, for instance. Maybe there isn't an acceptable alternative to the granting of the variance because of the physical condition.
Will I address that myself?
Yeah.
That would put the new owners in the same situation I was in originally, where there'll be, the way, it's gonna be movable shed. They can put the, what do they call it, other big dashes, pull them out and move them.
Well.
Move it.
But, see, the problem is, once the variance is granted, the variance runs with the land, which means?
It's permanent.
Yeah, it's permanent, it has the ability to have this shed at that location forever. So if you sell the house, the next people coming in would take the shed as is, and the town really can't tell them later, you have to move that shed. Because if there was a variance granted, let's say, back in 2015. So the variance runs with the land, it doesn't run with the people.
Yeah.
I suspect that what they did was a land, the easiest way was take the sheds down and they didn't have to get approval, they didn't have to come here, they didn't have to do it.
I was told that they could have moved them, but there's no way for them to move them. One of them wasn't a good shed anyway, you know, would you?
I suspect, the practical answer probably was, get rid of them, yeah.
Well, one thing here is that this here, the, the accessory building being the shed, has to be 12 feet from the principal building, being the house. And it is, so you don't need a variance there?
No, on that side.
No. So you were just asking for a property variance on the side. You're saying you have seven feet to the property line, and I think you're supposed to have 25 feet?
No, 20, I heard 20.
20?
20.
I heard 20, Joe.
All right, so then you need a 13-foot variance?
Yes.
Does that say that in the application? Is that what he's asking?
I don't know. Yeah, they're asking for a 6-foot variance.
So, it was 14 at that time. It was a little ambiguous, I kind of rushed a little bit, because I wanted to get it out, because we had just moved in, in February.
Well, I'm taking this as, Mr. Vecchio, I'm taking this as, from the side of the shed to the property line is 7 feet.
Yes, that's correct.
So the variant, the side setback needs to be 20 feet. So you're asking for a 13-foot variance?
Yes.
So that's how that should read.
Not that, not that you want a 6-foot variance, but that you want a, well, you have to decide, you know, we can't.
13-foot variance.
You want 14 or you want 14?
Right. So you always want to say 15?
No, it says 6.
That's what we're interpreting, yeah.
The application says 6, if we can amend it.
I wasn't sure at the time what I wanted to do, I needed to get it out, because things were up in the air. It's a lot of stress, a lot of pressure.
That's okay, we can correct it here.
Right, but if it should agree with, I mean, if you're content that the diagram is correct, 7 feet,
that's what I would like.
Then the application should be corrected to a request for a 13-foot variance.
Understood.
But the side off the house doesn't change, right? The side facing the house, that footage doesn't change?
No.
Okay.
Have you, what accounts for the 7-foot variance? Have you considered?
Why do I want?
If the shed moved over, let's say, so that the sideline of the shed was more in line with the house, where you show a dotted line.
Right, that's just show.
If it moved over and you requested less of the variance, is that a huge issue?
With me, it would be.
Assuming they plowed the snow next to it.
It would be with me, because I came from the city, and, I mean, I like the city and everything, although we sat in the hand. And I don't like, I'm not claustrophobic per se, I just like to see space, that's why I moved up here in the first place.
I think what he's saying is there'd be no space, there'd be only two feet between his building and the shed to walk through.
And there's also a tree.
It's like walking down an alleyway.
I just think that you have a lot of space back there, and you can do something that is more in conformity with the code.
See, there's a tree also blocking the way, you'll see the little tree at the end.
Let's see what?
Yeah.
I think, I think what Joe was talking about was moving the building this way. You have 8 inches extra here.
Yeah, I could move it.
If you moved it over.
Well, I guess I can.
The 8 inches?
8 inches, I can go with the 8.
It'd still be, it'd still be 12, 4, 12 feet, 4 inches is gonna be the variance if you moved it over, Joe. Is that what you were talking about, moving the building over to the, to the side more towards?
Is, is the intention for this garage to house a car?
No, no, no. It'll be just, I want to get a riding tractor.
Tools and riding, driving cars and sheds.
End storage, like a storage shed, because we don't have the space in the house.
I think that part of the reason why the board members are asking you these questions is because one of the issues that you're gonna have to address at the hearing is, is there another way that is feasible for the applicant to pursue without requesting the variance? Or maybe without requesting as much of a variance? So then the issue is, with this room behind the house, is there some other location for the shed? And where it could go to either lessen the impacts of the variance? It could be spun, can it face the other way?
I could make it look like a condo, and the end of my house is here, and you got the shed over here, and satisfy every one of the requirements, but I really don't want to do that, because it's not a condo.
There's also a walkway to get to the back of the house.
And I see the walk, although the shed.
So that's gonna be right on top of the walkway.
Well, unless the shed moved back toward the rear property.
But there's a tree there.
Yeah, there is a tree, we can see that, there is a big tree there.
A tree there, with big, big roots.
You know, I think it's a bandage to put it on the walkway, then you're on the walkway, you get right to the shed. I understand that aesthetically, that seems your biggest concern, but, but.
It looks nice to me.
Excuse me?
He wants it to look nice too. I had something too, that I thought of. Have you looked at any sheds?
I've seen some.
Because a 10, this is 12 by 16.
Yeah.
A 10 by 14 is a decent-sized shed.
It is, but it's not a 16.
No, it's not.
I need the extra space, really.
You know, you're saying what you want, what you want, what you want. And our responsibility is to see that you stay as close to what the code of the town is as possible. So when somebody makes a suggestion to you, don't just automatically refute it.
I didn't refute anything. I says, I wouldn't, I want it to look aesthetically better, it's better for the community. If I want them to sell the house, maybe somebody doesn't want a shed that close in the first place. But that's okay, I'll accept that, but.
I think the basic thing, Mr. Vecchio, is you want a shed for your tools and your tractor.
Storage, actual storage as well.
But that's what you need to stick with, you know? And if you can do that with smaller, and the reason I'm saying that is because I too have looked at sheds, and a 10 by 14 shed is a good-sized shed, you can put a lot of stuff in there. You know, 10 by 14, and how high is, are you going up?
Well, it depends, it depends on how high the ceiling's gonna be. If it's 7, 7 feet ceilings, I was told it'd be less than 18 inches, about 18 inches higher than that. So that would make it close to 9 feet, it'd be between 9 and 11 feet, the height. I'm not sure exactly what I'm gonna do with it at this point in time. Because if you all look, you can look all around the area, you'll see people closer to that fence and the property line for various reasons. And I have to wonder how they were allowed to do what they did.
Not by us?
No, not by you, I mean, you weren't here when the, when the variances were made.
Well, I mean, they, when, what you're talking about predated the variance.
Predated, yes.
Predated the codes, not the variances.
I don't know about that.
Or there may have been some variance.
Or they may have got variances, yeah, right.
But why would they get a variance for things that might even be closer to it?
Well, you'd have to go, to complete that statement, you'd have to go to the building department and look up their, their site plans and see if they got a variance or if they predated. And if you wanted to bring it in as a pre-existing, a precedence, you could do that.
I don't like to get other people involved, do I want to do?
So, but you.
It's like finger pointing.
I know, but you like to generalize, and we can't generalize, we have to be exact. I know, but you like to generalize, and we can't generalize, we have to be exact.
Point to all things.
That's the thing, yeah.
Mr. Vecchio, could you live with a 10 by 14?
We have a lot of stuff that, you know, my daughter's downstairs with her daughter. There's their stuff, and there's my stuff, that we can get. It's a problem. I originally wanted a 10 by 12, but then the more I looked at what I needed, it changed, and life goes on.
One of the big problems is that tree. That tree wasn't there, you could shift the whole thing over. The tree at the trees. Unless you want to get rid of the tree, I don't know.
I'd love to do it, do you want to take it?
I don't know.
Well, you gotta shut it down for public hearing.
There are certain things that you really should consider, though. Certainly, one is what Bob has said about reducing the size of the shed, adjusting where it's going to be. The other thing that I would like to see from you is some kind of verification about your handicap.
Well, I got a veteran's, I can bring in the papers for that.
You'll have to do that.
And she's 100%.
Whatever, just, you know, you don't have to tell me now, you have to bring in the documentation.
She has the documentation, yes.
Why are you shaking your head?
Because I don't believe you got to go through all of this. I'm being honest.
Ladies and stuff.
Well, you do, obviously, you do.
And then still, you're requesting, you're requesting a variance, and you're requesting the board to weigh everything you say, and be sympathetic, or realize that this is a different reality. But another reality is, is that when you bought the property, all these exist, all these conditions existed.
We found out too late.
That's, I know, I know.
We were deeply into the whole process.
What was it, a month before we were ready to move in, they started taking the sheds away. We knew nothing about it, we bought it with the sheds on there.
Yeah, that's a problem.
Well, that's, that would have been a time to find a Mr. Moriello.
But keep in mind, you may not have been able to close if they didn't do that.
Yeah, well, that was the problem.
And they probably, they were aware of that.
Things happen, you know, and you want to get the house, like the area. It's hard to find a nice place in Newport, as far as I'm concerned. Water all over the place. I can't, I have a house in New Windsor, and the shed is actually holding me up. I'm paying double taxes, double everything, and the electric.
How big is the shed?
Yes, and electric. I don't have a shed over there.
Yes, and a lodge.
Oh, I don't have a...
Like I say, maybe you should move it here.
Yeah, right.
But here, here's what I would say, though. You got to stay in reality. I understand you have a circumstance, everybody has particular circumstances. And I would, just as a suggestion, the reason I said, if you did a 10 by 14, now you're only 11 feet into a variance instead of 13 feet. I'm not even saying that the board would grant that, but it reduces what you're asking for. And what I would say is, if you, that is a sizable shed for outdoor equipment to maintain your property. And then you might want to think about how you can focus on separating what you need to store outdoor, and what is family stuff that could be stored indoor, under beds, or over closets, or over moldings. There's other modifications in a house that can be made. I came from the city too. We took over moldings and put plywood up, and that became a storage area. So then, you might want to just consider that, so that you can move ahead. Because we want you to be here and be happy, you know, with where you're living. But, you got to, Joe.
Joe, it's going to ask, the survey, of course, shows the well capped, because that's something above ground. Do you, where the existing well is?
Yes.
Do you know where the existing septic field is?
I think we recently found out, because the heat from the septic tank melted the snow.
In the front of the house.
And the heat from the tank did, and then you probably also have to find where the drain lines are.
I often wondered about that, where this thing was.
So where, about where is that?
Whereabout is that? Let me see if I can point it out.
On which side of the house?
It's almost here, the walkway going outside of the house.
Oh, it's in the front.
Yeah, it would be in the front, and... It would be maybe about 1/3 away, a little further away from the walkway in the front.
Okay, so it's in the front of the house, but it is not in the rear of the house.
No, it's not the rear. That's where I think it is, that's... Non-substantiated variance.
Oh, I always said it.
Yeah, I guess so. Any other questions at this point? Bob, go ahead.
I just think that we need to be, it seems to me we need to be clear with Mr. Vecchio, what we want him to bring back, if we're going to start inviting the public.
Yes, yes, I agree with you. That you might want to consider modifying what you have asked from you.
In terms of the size of the shed, right?
The size of the shed, perhaps even the location of the shed. I haven't just assumed that this is the best location for it.
You know, because what we were talking about is setting public hearing. That means we'd be inviting the public in. You might not be ready for that. You might want to wait till some of the, more of the snow melts, so you can really see your property, and talk with your family, and decide, is this the best place for it? Is this the only size you can live with? How can you come back to this board in good faith with hopes of achieving what you want, which is to get a variance? You know?
I've already spoken to the neighbors who own the shed, and I have paperwork for it. I have copies of 3 with me right now. We'll have to consider it, we'll stay without it.
At this point, I'm not necessarily talking about the neighbors for that part. Talking about the board, what you bring back to the board. And being precise, you know, it's easy to say about 3 feet, about 4. It's better to know that it's 4 feet or 3 feet, because it's easier for us to look at granting a variance that is less being asked of us than more. Because just what Mr. Moriello said, doesn't just, it's not just for you, it stays with the property.
Well, I have an issue with my property too. There's a drainage area in back of the property, and the restriction is for an acre of land. I look at an acre of land as useful, useful land. And that piece of property back there is a 40-foot water thing, all the way in the back.
But it says footing grain?
No, no, back here. And the property line looks like it's on my property there, which makes it nonusable.
Yeah, it's not, it's...
Well, I mean, you have to use your assets.
Yeah, I mean, if the width is narrowed...
So that would put me within the restrictions of being able to...
See, that tree is in the way.
I know.
Because the restriction is based on an acre of land, my knowledge. I think Kelly would recognize being led to that. The restrictions were 20 feet and 12 feet, from 12 feet from the house and 20 feet from the property line. Is that based on an acre of land?
I think you have a little less than an acre.
But it says 1 acre, 1.0.
Right, but that doesn't say that in our code. Doesn't say in the code about an acre.
You don't have, you might have a drainage swale in your backyard, but that's not flat lands.
But it's not useful property, I can't do anything back there. I'm not, I'm not allowed to do anything by now.
I think, I think I understand what you're getting at, you're saying, I really have less than an acre of usable property, there's a 40-foot wide drainage adjustment back here. I, you're right, but your ownership is a lawful 1-acre lot.
I don't particularly like the idea of paying taxes on a piece of property that I can't use. But that's another issue.
Yeah, that's another issue.
It is, here's what happens when, we have the, everything attached to it. When you, when you come in with your actual, when we're ready to move ahead, we're going to ask you questions, and one of the questions is, was whether the alleged difficulty was self-created, which considerations shall be relevant to the decision of the zoning board of appeals, but not necessarily conclude granting the variance. So was it self-created? We didn't create it, you bought it like that. So you have to read these questions too, that's on your application, and understand where you fall in those parameters, because these are going to be, whether the request of variance is substantial. 13 feet on a 20-foot setback is pretty substantial. Well, I tried to reduce that. Yeah, I talked to you when I came in, and I changed my shed, now it's only 11 feet. You know, this is how, you understand, Mr. Vecchio?
It's a negotiation process at this point. But I got things in the city with this, and not the proper place.
Well, I don't want to leave you with the wrong impression, it's not a negotiation.
No, no, it's not a negotiation, it's a negotiation on my part with me.
Oh, hi.
Right.
It might help.
I'm self-imposed.
Let's put it that way, negotiation on your part might...
Yeah, my accordion, that's what I have to do.
I'm sorry?
I think take my accordion, if I can lift it.
You know, we find sometimes people with a little bit of thought and pushing the pencil around, even figure out a way to do it without even looking for a variance.
But it can be done, you know, if the tree wasn't there. But still, that tree is, it would push the thing further where I would want to walk. Because I'm getting older, as it is, being seniors, and, but this is the way it is, life goes on.
Right, but I want to tell you something else. When you get set up, and all the snow is gone, and you have your little tractor that you keep your yard with, you can ride, you don't have to walk.
I don't know if I can afford the tractor.
And when you, and when you bring out the accordion, I want to know where the monkey is. Because I used to live in a city too, and a guy used to come around with an accordion and a monkey, and play on Saturday mornings, and we used to throw money out the window when I was a kid.
I don't do that example, I do easy listening, giving it.
I'm not sure, let me move this along. I'm not sure, Joe, that we should set a public hearing yet. I think there are so many questions about this variance. You got a feeling about that? I mean, we certainly can.
If I could ask one more question.
Don't delay the application.
Okay.
Unless, unless the applicant would want to consent and say, look, don't set the public hearing for the next month's meeting. We would consent to have you set it 2 months out, to give us time enough to think about it. Without their consent, I would say that you need to move the application or set the public hearing. If it turns out, within a week or so of the public hearing, Kelly, that you're, that you think you want more time, contact Kelly at the office, ask that it be put over until the May meeting, and generally, this board will accept that.
Okay.
So, I mean, you almost control the choice.
We have to know the exact amount of relief that he's requesting in order to put in the notice in the paper, so we would need this exact final decision, if we're going to publish it within a week.
That's what I mean. I mean, right now, the publication would be that it's going to be for a 7-foot, for a 13-foot side yard variance. That's what the newspaper is going to say, that's what the notices that the neighbors are going to get. Sometimes later, if you want to change it, it gets tougher with the neighbors.
You'd think it would be a little better if we do make a smaller shed. In other words, instead of 12 feet, if I make it 10 feet, that's 2 feet off the top on the side, that's a question. That would make it a 11-foot variance. Or maybe even less than that, because if I move the shed another 9 inches to the left, that'll make it almost a...
10.3.
What if you made it long and narrow?
Well, that's what it's going to be, it'd be longer and narrower, the 2 feet missing on the right side.
So that's what I was going to ask, the question I was going to ask is in terms of the tree, assuming you're allowed to cut the tree down, and how, and I'm not about cutting trees down, trust me. But if that, if that was an option that worked for you, that changes the whole dynamics, because this could almost move a little bit this way, make it narrower, a little bit longer, even maybe put a little gravel, walkway, or something to it. I mean, just a thought.
Yeah, no, that's...
Just a thought, I don't know how critical the tree is.
I've considered that, that tree, it'll cost a lot of money to get rid of it, unless God takes care of it.
Right, right, yeah. And again, I'm not about cutting trees down, but, you know, what are your priorities?
Costs a lot of money to cut down that tree.
It's a healthy tree. We don't encourage cutting down trees.
I don't either, I don't either, but I'm just trying to think outside the box here, you know?
I've considered that.
Or can you, can you just go, you know, can you go diagonally this way, and be on this side of the tree, and have a little bit of a walkway gravel, or even cement that you put in?
That would be a consideration.
That's what I was saying, when the snow melts, you might have a different look.
No, I looked at it with ourself too.
Last year. But you've come a long way, because when we went out, when we went out to visit, you didn't know any of this, you didn't know, you weren't sure where the property line was, you were guessing at that.
Well, my mind was in a state of flux.
Okay, so you, sounds like you're getting sharper and sharper.
I want to go after it.
So here is the question, right?
Yes.
Would you like us to set the public hearing?
Yes.
For April?
No, for the next, the next meeting is, is April?
Yes, April 14.
April 14?
Now, you do understand, you do understand what Kelly said, that these dimensions, this situation, this site plan, has to go, be specified in the notice to the public, and that means that is what we're going to be voting on.
I will, I'll revise that, I have the original copy, it's pencil. I'll just move it, whatever I want to do, the size, make it small.
And when does he have to do that by, Kelly?
It's got to be in the paper and sent to all of the abutters 2 weeks before the hearing. So it would be in April 1st newspaper, so...
Well, the paper comes out when's?
Right.
You use Wednesday?
And April 1st is a Wednesday.
April 1st is a Wednesday.
The 8th is a Wednesday.
But they need the information before the 1st.
So I would need it before, prior to April 1st, so I would need it by...
So Friday before, or Thursday?
Friday to...
I would need it that week, because he would need enough time to do the mailings.
Yes, right, your neighbors have to know.
Was it the 23rd?
So I would need it by the week of the 23rd.
Okay.
It's March 23rd.
March, March 23rd, and this is the 10th.
Still before, it's on tax day, okay, that's good.
All right. Then I'll entertain a motion that we set the Vecchio public hearing for April 14.
So move.
Thank you.
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you very, very much, board members. It's been a positive, beautiful year.
It's good to see you again.
Thank you, thank you for your time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Good luck.
Good luck to you.
Mr. Moriello?
I'll share my experience.
Thank you for your explanation.
We're trying to...
Mr. Vecchio, you're going to come see me, right?
Yes. I will do another. I just don't want to get my back.
No, you're going to, you're going to come to the office.
Oh, okay.
So that we can get your Thursday or Friday or next week, and you can make a decision.
And what's your name?
Take care, I don't want to...
I don't know, I haven't known you.
So technically, I don't think we have any vote in this, but if you want to do administrative issues, this is Joe. Our new CBA.
Hiya, Joe.
Hey, welcome.
Joe, I'm sorry, I keep forgetting your last name.
Do So.
Do So, it's pronounced Do So, not Draw So, it's a Do So, very good. I'm glad you showed up for this, you get some sense of, you know, how we, how we deal with things, and with the stuff that's going on, so, yeah. And of course, I sort of have an informal approval, and unfortunately, you're going to have to replace Bob, who is going to be one tough act to replace.
Okay, I'll do one of those.
I'm sure you'll do fine. Phil's moving along right away. I expect you to do the same.
And at this point, there is a little more administrative business, and that's saying farewell to Bob, and telling him just how valuable he has been for the many years that he has given public service to the town of DuPaul's in various, various roles, starting with the ENCC, chairing the planning board, which is an enormous job, being here on CBA, being wise, being even-handed, being nonjudgmental, being impartial, all the way through. Bob, thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'm almost brought to tears.
Well, don't be brought to tears.
I am.